Followed by Mary Ann Webster.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. My name is Sidney Camlocker and I am District Director for Assemblymember Holly Mitchell, who represents the 47th Assembly District. As you all know, Assemblymember Mitchell is co-author of AB 972, which would place a moratorium on fracking until regulations with integrity are both established and can be enforced. I will say that both she and Assemblymember Betsy Butler have heard from advocates on the current language and are working with stakeholders on amended language. She is continuing to learn about this issue and plans to further this critical dialogue at the state issue. I'm here to reiterate the fact that this is a very important issue that needs to be addressed. Assemblymember Mitchell is encouraged by the civic engagement on display in Culver City regarding this issue. And we are looking to your leadership on this issue tonight. I want to just say that so goes Culver City, so goes the nation.
Mary Ann Webster, I'm here as a mayor. I have four written comments.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Mary Ann Webster. I'm a resident of Culver City and I'm also representing the Sierra Club, which is the largest environmental organization in the country. I'll be brief because I've already submitted a letter to your packets, to each of you, requesting support for the resolution before you tonight. It urges a moratorium on fracking by the State of California's Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources. The Sierra Club had a very strong policy against fracking until research proves it to be safe and until strict guidelines are met. These guidelines are consistent with the Culver City resolution. And the burden of proof on the safety of that process should be on PXP and similar companies to prove that fracking is not a harmful process. We do believe that fracking is a destructive technology. You have a combination of dangerous chemicals injected under high pressure, contaminating our brown water and ground stability and compromising the surrounding environment, which is our environment. The risks are too high. The damage from fracking is potentially irreversible and a threat to our health and to our safety and to our natural resources. The Sierra Club asks that you support the resolution before you. And I might add that this does not preclude also supporting a local ban on fracking and stringent local regulations. Thank you.
And Mayor Weissman, following four written comments from Deirdre Powell: "I fully support a total ban on the fracking process, not just in Culver City, but in California. The process has not been proven safe and until it has, I think it should be stopped." From Carol Bora: "I believe that if every Culver City, Los Angeles County, and California resident truly understood the nature and practice of fracking, they would not want to allow it in our collective backyard. It is the responsibility of our politicians and each and every one of us to make sure people know, for if they know the facts, they will know that this is not something that is safe for our communities. Let's use the gifts of our land, sun, and wind." From Terry Silverman: "Honorable councilmembers, please act responsibly to protect the health and well-being of the members of your community and vote to ban fracking now." Thank you. And from Cameron Spencer: "Ban fracking now. Vote to preserve our environment." Thank you, Mr. Powell. Thank you all for taking the time to come out here this evening. Thanks to all of you who are here tonight, who were also here with us on June 12. Let me just be clear as far as this council is concerned. There is nothing more important to this council than the health and safety of this community. And we are going to do all that we can do to ensure that the environmental protections that are controlling with regard to the urban oil field that is in Culver City and adjacent to Culver City protect the environment, protect the health and safety of people. But as was indicated earlier this evening, this is really a two-step discussion. The first part of the discussion is with regard to the resolution directed to the state. The second part of the discussion that we're going to have this evening is what do we do next? What do we do after that resolution? For those that are unaware, the city has been in the process of revising its very old drilling ordinance to provide protections that are necessary and available to the community today that were not available at the time the oil drilling ordinance that is currently on books was adopted decades ago. The question of fracking, the options available to deal with fracking, including prohibiting the practice, is something that I would imagine is going to come forward in the context of our discussion with regard to what that drilling ordinance is going to look like. We'll get to that in a few moments. With regard to the resolution that is before us this evening, who would like to start? I think we should probably discuss the resolution and then, once we know what we want to say and then move forward to resolve to adopt. We'll go this way. I'm still writing.
I think that words are important. I've heard that sometimes the word moratorium and the word ban can be interchangeable. But I think that it's important to be strong and I think it's important to revise our resolution just slightly and say, "The city of Culver City urges Governor Jerry Brown and California State Department of Conservation, Division of Oil, Gas, and Geothermal Resources, to immediately place a ban on hydraulic fracturing and on the disposal of fracking wastewater by injection wells until Dogger takes all necessary and appropriate actions to adopt, implement, and enforce comprehensive regulations concerning the practice of fracking that will ensure that the public health and safety and the environment will be adequately protected." It's one word in the original resolution, it said moratorium. I would like us to say ban.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight isn't about PR and bringing this issue up and moving forward with this. It's not about us giving hollow promises to a very active audience. And thank you all of you for coming out here and filling up these chambers to express what you're thinking and feeling regarding this issue. But we're also here to represent this whole city, all the other 40,000 people that aren't here tonight, and I know that you're representing them also. So we appreciate that. As the mayor said and many other people said, it's about the health and safety of our community. It's not about us thinking about how much is it going to cost us. It's about people and their health. It's about my children, it's about your children. And that's what our responsibility as councilmembers up here. I'm fine with Councilmember Sally Wells' amendment to place the word ban instead of moratorium in regards to Resolution Number 2012-H.
Thank you. I'm very concerned about the fracking issue, as you are. I'm really looking forward to the agency that has the authority to regulate, to get down to regulating, and so we can decide whether the regulations are protective enough, are good enough for us. We're trying to come up with an ordinance. We're trying to create a community standards district to protect the public. And yet, the information that we're getting is modeled. It's so secret, it's so protected. It's frustrating. It's frustrating for me in order to be able to make decisions. So I am looking forward to having more information. The idea, I mean, it was the funniest comment at the public meeting, that oil companies have to voluntarily submit information to a website. Frack Focus is a joke. I don't have enough knowledge. The comments by the Department of Conservation stated that fracking's been done for years. Okay, fracking's been done for years. Well, what's the difference between the new way of fracking and the old way of fracking? Why is it not called something different so we can differentiate between the two? This problem didn't exist before. Now, there's a different way of fracking. That's why the wells that were declining in usage and drilling are now opening up again because they've discovered something different. I need information. I'm begging for information here. I need the regulations to at least make sure, or at least we need them to know, what are we talking about when it comes to fracking? We need to know, specific to Culver City, when it comes to the oil field itself. Well, where is this oil or gas that you're trying to drill for? How far down is it? How far underneath our city is it specifically? How, you know, where is it? The width of our oil field is three quarters of a mile. It's my understanding that the drilling can go for two miles. So it doesn't matter what we do here in Culver City. They can put a well one side of us and go a mile and a quarter the other side of us and skip us altogether. So this is very important that this is done at a state level. I'm, as a member of the Board of the Santa Monica Bay Restoration Commission and a member of the League of California Cities Legislative Action Committee, the Independent Cities Legislative Action Committee, have asked them to bring this subject to us at all different board levels so that we can have an open discussion. For a small city like Culver City, to attack it on our own is... We'll be discussing that after the resolution is discussed. I want to know, can I visit the oil field? Can I see what's going on there? Can I know where the water's coming from? Can I know how confident they are that the water is trapped in some magical container underneath the ground and can never escape? You know, so... I will be looking at, and I brought this up when I was at the mayor's conference in Washington, DC. Is there a way of, since we already have carcinogenic chemicals in this brown water going into our water source? Four of the chemicals are listed in the Baldwin Hills Conservancy's EIR back in 2006, I believe, as four of the items. Specifically, copper inventory threshold required for reporting is 30 times the amount that the threshold states you must report after this and after... If there's more than this, we're going to fine you for putting in more than you should be. The lead amount is 10 times. The cadmium amount is 48 times. The PAH, which is polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons, is 84 times the amount. And these are the chemicals that are listed as on the Santa Monica Bay Restorations, or sorry, the TMDLs that a city like Culver City could be fined for if they show up at the ocean, at the end of the creek, when they do one test. There's four items not supposed to be here. Culver City's going to be fined because you were on the creek where we found this, at the end of the creek. So there's a lot of concerns to Culver City. We need to move forward. We need the regulations. We need our protections until the regulations are in place. This resolution is hugely important to this city. And I won't be confident in any decision-making until I have more information. So I'm on a binge. With that, I'll be supporting the resolution.
I'm going to support the resolution as written, without the amendment, as proposed by my colleague. I feel it'll be easier for the state to be able to implement a moratorium, or for the governor and the legislature to give behind a moratorium than to deal with the issue of trying to implement a ban. But it does produce the same result, I believe. So therefore, I'm going for something that I believe will be easier to be done at the state level. We do have a moratorium, though. There is a moratorium in place right now. That's as a result of the CSD agreement with PXP that requires them to undertake a study on fracking, and that study is to be peer reviewed. That study is due out July 15. It will go to the peer review. It will take some time for the peer review to be done with that, and then we'll know the results, so maybe sometime around in the middle of August. What I want to use that time between now and then to do is to do a thorough assessment of the facts, specifically as the impact Culver City and the Inglewood Oil Field. Not Ohio, not Pennsylvania, not New Jersey, or anywhere else. I want to know what the impact is on us here in Culver City and have those facts. I welcome all of the presentations by the groups that presented and any information that you have that's relevant to Culver City and the Inglewood Oil Field. Please share it with us. I want to use the time to educate our elected officials. As Sidney said, Holly Mitchell is evolving in her position with respect to the moratorium. It's incumbent upon us here in Culver City to educate our elected officials at the state and county level on the impacts of this issue, and we should use the time to do that. We should also use the time to be able to present the facts to and lobby Dogger to ensure that they are fully, that we are fully protected here in Culver City when they do come out with the regulations. Not to just sit back and let them do their thing, but actually try to help accumulate the information that's needed and to go up and lobby and pressure and do what we need to be doing as elected officials. And then, if Dogger does develop regulations that do not fully protect us in Culver City, I will then support implementing a ban on fracking in Culver City. But I think for now, what we need to do is to make sure that we're... A moratorium basically encompasses the same thing. It prevents the fracking from going forward, but allows us to also go out and get the facts that we need so that when we can make informed choices about what the impacts are. We may not know, it may be worse than we think it is even, or it may not be as bad as we think it is. But I would like to know those facts before we move forward. So I support my colleague, Hall, in terms of also wanting to know more information. There's a lot of questions that are still unanswered, and I'd like us to get that. I'd like to use the moratorium as a way to be able to find the time to get those answers and then to be very aggressive in our lobbying with Dogger. So that's my position. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
From my perspective, whether the resolution says moratorium, ban, or prohibit the practice, I think the essence for me of the resolution, and as Camlocker, he would carry this back to Assemblymember Mitchell, is that until Dogger takes all necessary and appropriate actions to implement, to, excuse me, to adopt, implement, and enforce comprehensive regulations concerning the practice of fracking that will ensure the public health and safety and the environment will be adequately protected. Not just any regulations, but comprehensive regulations that will protect our health, our safety, and our environment. Back to the original instructions, no applause, please. And I'm not sure that the impact, I think, of our resolution is the directive to the state to take comprehensive action. If there are three votes to change the word moratorium, to ban, I'm certainly not going to let that one word change my vote. I'm in support of the resolution, whichever word we decide to put in. Joe, who do you want to add?
Thanks. I'm really happy that we have consensus on the resolution itself. I do feel that the word ban would speak a little more strength to the state. It is semantics true, but at least it's saying to the state that our little city here really means business and really takes us seriously. And we're asking them to push forward with this. So I would hope that I would, as I supported Councilman Sally Wells, council member, pardon me, Sally Wells' amendment, I would hope that we would have a third voting member to support that.
That's a motion and a second. Correct. Any further discussion? It's the resolution with the word ban.
I just make the statement again, I think it's going to be easier at the state level for Dogger and the governor to act on a moratorium and not a ban. And ultimately, we get the same result.
Not just standing there. I think you'll oppose a motion. And perhaps we can...
Ultimately, then whatever action we take, we take an answer.
Right. There's a third.
Let's do this by hand motion. The resolution as proounded has the word ban instead of moratorium. All in favor, raise your hand.
Well, I guess it wins.
All opposed? Mr. Mayor?
I want to explain the reason that I'm confident moratorium is fine. Moratorium is a ban, and it is a ban with a limit, a time limit, because we have to make decisions. I don't want the state to get pressure to delay the regulations from... And if we have a moratorium that's saying, "We can do nothing until this happens." So now the pressure's on. We're bringing the pressure. We're bringing the pressure, saying, "You need to come up with some solutions so that we can make decisions." I'm hoping that that word is, it means nothing other than there will be no fracking until we get the regulations that we can decide what our next move is.
We want a regulated earthquake.
May I?
Yes, ma'am.
I think that state needs pressure. I think that with the public's attention and the media's attention and all the many problems that have been going on all over this country and other countries, that we don't really have time to mess around and not be bold right now. Obviously, we need more information. Obviously, we need information that's pertinent to this area. But this is a resolution to the state. We are saying what we want from the state. And I think that if we're listening to Culver City, Culver City has been pretty clear that that moratorium, it's just not strong enough. And that ban, it sends a message, and it's a message that needs to be heard. This is California. You know, we should have done this a long time ago. I think people expected of California. And we expect it from our Democratic governor, and he needs to know we expect that as well. I think we'll get an opportunity later, Mayor Weissman, to talk about the second part, so I won't go off into that speech. But the message really does matter. And this is the largest urban oil field in the country. We have so much at stake. And because of that, because of the importance, because of what we've already seen with drilling, we have to be bold. We can't... Anyway, I'm in my place.
I do agree. I do agree also. I think, once again, it is semantics, but I think the state, regardless of what we say, they're going to do their own thing. I really do. I think this is more symbolic than anything else. If we're going to do a symbol here... Excuse me, you had your chance to speak, so please. That's all, that's what we need to say. If we're going to say something to the state, we should let them know how we really feel about this. I know that one gentleman brought up the city of LA having a ban. The city of LA doesn't have a ban. They were passing a resolution that's because of the size of LA, I think it's in the subcommittee working its way somewhere, but here we have a little bit more of a direct approach. So that's why I feel, as Councilmember Wells suggests, that it would send a much bolder message to the state and raise their eyebrows and look at this serious issue.
I don't think we ought to get hung up on the word, whether the word is ban or moratorium, or whether it's to prohibit the practice of hydraulic fracturing until... It's the until part that I think is the message that needs to be communicated. I'm prepared to change. If somebody wants to reintroduce how... I think it's important, the message that we send needs to be a unanimous message. If that's to include the word ban, then I'm prepared to support that.
Thank you, Mayor Weissman. I'd like to reintroduce the amendment to change the word moratorium to ban in our resolution.
Second. Is that okay with you?
That's fine.
Is there a motion by Sally Wells, seconded by Cooper? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Aye, opposed? We could. I've gotten a little frightened. Thank you. Now we're going to proceed to a discussion of the second portion of the agenda item this evening, which is a discussion of options related to local regulation of fracking. As I indicated earlier, we are in the process, we have been in the process for quite a while now, of updating our antiquated drilling ordinance for those that may have lost focus over the last couple of years. The city of Culver City, as well as other community groups, challenged the sufficiency of the environmental impact report that was done in the city in accounting of Los Angeles. of the environmental impact report that was done in the county of Los Angeles as part of their CSD process. During that litigation, which lasted over a year and a half, our drilling ordinance efforts were put on hold while we awaited the results of the litigation, because until we knew whether the environmental impact report was going to stand, or whether additional mitigations were going to be required in the county, we weren't sure exactly where our model, our ordinance was going to go, because it was a large mission going to be modeled against the counties and the CSDs since they occupy 90% of the oil field. We are now in the process of finalizing our drilling ordinance, and will now have an opportunity to deal with the issue of fracking as part of that ordinance process and the discussion that goes along with that as a preamble. Where would we like to start on the issue of what next? Nathan?
I actually wrote my remarks because this is quite an issue, as we all know. I want to thank you all for being here tonight. I admire your activism, your research, your tenacity, and like every truly important movement, we know this is not going to be a quick, nor is it going to be an easy fight. But I think that many of you are ready to do this on the long term. I've had so many conversations with members of the public who are concerned and committed to protecting our safety, our property values, and our future. I've heard about health issues, bad smells, explosions, toxic releases, damage to homes, and I've heard questions. Is it going to get worse? Is what's being reported in other places in the country going to happen here? And how can you protect us? Hydraulic fracturing has significant potential to affect the air we breathe, the water we drink, and the very ground that we stand on. In regions across the US, the EPA and the US Geological Survey and countless peer-reviewed studies have shown that the fracking process has been the cause of water contamination, air pollution, and seismic activity. To my knowledge, the largest urban oil field in the US, the Inwood Oil Field, has not yet been subject to comprehensive studies by the EPA or the US Geological Survey that guarantee the safety of hydraulic fracturing. Yet, the conditions on the ground should make our specific location subject to specific study. As the largest urban oil field in the country, this large population means that the slightest little accident, or mishap, or spill, or leak, or, you know, something somebody forgot somehow, never happens, does it? That that will have the maximum impact on human health and welfare, and an impact on our economy, our many homes and businesses in this area. Now, in terms of water supply, we live in a drought-prone area with a scarcity of local water sources, making these resources we do have all the more precious. We're already largely dependent on imported water, and we pay much more for that water than most communities do. So if we somehow have a contamination, it's going to have an even larger impact here than it would in many other areas. Fracking is water-intensive. It uses millions of gallons of water that are mixed with chemicals pumped into the ground, and some of the chemical-laced water is recycled, some of it stays in the ground, some of it will be deliberately injected back into the ground, and some will be shipped off to be treated. All of these, this incredibly complex process is not only water-intensive, but it also increases the risk for any type of small or large accident to happen. And we have to remember that we're in the Biondo Creek watershed. This is an incredibly sensitive area that goes into the Santa Monica Bay. Millions of dollars and countless years have been spent protecting this water, both the watershed, the Lauta Anno watershed, and also the bay. So if there is any kind of contamination or leakage like we saw at the Dogport, it's going to have a huge, huge impact. This is also an active earthquake zone. So when you look at the studies that have been done that show that earthquakes have happened as a result of the water injection process, it's very, very scary. And I wonder that, you know, even in the absence of an earthquake that's provoked by fracking, what about our normal earthquakes? And how does a two-inch layer of cement around a well casing survive a 7.4 earthquake? Is it possible? How can we prove that? Certainly, we need some more information. Then, of course, there's climate change. Now, Culver City, as has been mentioned many times tonight, has done a lot to improve the quality of our air and water, the quality of our life, the quality of our parks, and this form of extraction is extremely energy-intensive, water-intensive, carbon-intensive. So the mandate that the state of California has to reduce carbon emissions, when you have to truck in chemicals and you have to, and water, and then you have to track them out, and you have to somehow get rid of them, and as we're learning in the environmental movement, you know, when you throw something away, there's no away. Away doesn't exist. So in terms of climate change, I fear that fracking seems like the perfect way to go backwards rather than forwards. Finally, California's regulatory agency, Dogger, has publicly admitted on June 12th that existing regulations are inadequate, and that's why they're working on regulations right now, specific to fracking. And for that reason, I fully support, and we just voted on the resolution to ask Governor Brown and Dogger to create meaningful regulations. And I would ask for Culver City, for our staff, to compile information, the information that we received here tonight from the public, as well as information that comes from other towns, other states, other cities. I think, unlike my colleague, Councilmember Clark, I think it is pertinent to hear examples from other towns, because even though the industry has said that, you know, fracking has been going on here for, you know, 40, 50 years, I don't believe that the technology is the same as it used to be. I think these technologies are being used in other areas of the country, and we do need to take them into consideration when we're developing our own regulations locally. So I would ask our staff tonight to please compile this information, get information from regulatory bodies, and real data from PXP. I would like you to ask PXP to give us more information about what they're doing on their oil fields in order for us to be able to make an informed decision to make our city safe. Thank you.
I do also, more information, so we can make the best decision regarding fracking. It's important to us now, and keep them fighting, because Councilmember Wells said the community kept giving us information to staff. But regarding other areas where this is happening, I kind of harken back to what Mr. Clark said, it's the topography of this particular area that's above us is unlike no other. As mentioned by many people, it is the outer circle of oil fields, surrounded by several hundred thousand people in every which direction. It's just so much is unknown, and we need information now more than ever. We've got, obviously, this Newport Eagle fault that goes directly underneath, and I pretty much, I don't have data, but I bet there's not too many other oil fields throughout the country that have a fault line like that going directly underneath their oil field, and probably primarily in rural areas also, more often than not. So we can best make our decision, we need more information from our staff, from experts in the community, from PXP, as to what's going on exactly up on Top Orville, and it'll make our job, what we need to do here, that much more easier. Thank you.
Anyhow, you want to add?
Thank you. Yeah, I think I got run away in the last discussion. I probably went into a little bit of what I'm about to say, but it warrants some reputation. We have a problem. We have, as I said earlier, not enough information to be confident in making a determination with regard to the effect on our city. And as was stated by the Department of Conservation, who are supposed to be on our side, the information is not being provided to them. So without the regulations, we can't start. We have to force the hand. I mean, I've been inundated with documents, commentaries, facts, or perceived facts, whatever... But I need, I need the truth, and I need to be able to look at the documents in front of me and say, "This makes sense. This makes sense that we have a problem or we do not have a problem." And I don't, I just don't like all the secrecy that's surrounding this whole issue. So I'm looking specifically for not a voluntary, but a requirement to submit information on fracking, a requirement, a regulation with regard to the submission of information. That may still raise suspicion, that may still raise concern in the community, but it's, for me, going to be a start. I want to know more about what I'm dealing with under Culver City. I saw a wonderful, very speeded-up presentation by one of our residents, and I'd like to see that again, with regard to his, what he has compiled. But I would like, if a state agency ever comes into these chambers again to tell the public what they know about a particular process, they will, I will walk away having learned something from them, and I walked away having learned nothing. It was shameful to be told by a department supposed to protect the public that they were here to give us some information with regard to a process that I didn't learn anything from. And I don't know if any of you have been in classes where you didn't learn anything, but it's not a fun waste of time. I was impressed with the outpouring of the public. I've heard terms that I want to know more about. I want to know more about why, why the fluids that are being used in drilling are protected from either... The term that I'd like to know more about specifically is what's been called the Halliburton loophole. I need to know what, why it's been called that. I need to know what it is. I need to know, I'm kind of suspicious as to why it's called that. I will get that part, but I need to know more. I need to know more about the source of the water. I need to know about the chemicals that are in there. It maddens me when at one moment on a particular website, there's lots of detail, and then I go back to that same website to see the detail again, and it's missing. It's gone, it's been removed. Now there's less detail, and that's not what I'm expecting to see if everyone is telling the truth. I want to know where the water is going. I don't know who's going to be able to tell me that, but I want somebody with technical knowledge to be able to say, "Look, there's an assumption that because there's gas or oil trapped down here for thousands of years, or millions of years, whatever it is, that we're getting it out, and the stuff we're putting in is going to be in that same contained area, even with the amount of pressure we're putting on that little area to get it out." I want, I want to hear specifics. I want to hear somebody tell me, "We can assure you, Councilman O'Leary, and I will make a determination when I hear that." I've seen reference in Dogger's authority to supervisor in one area, and also petroleum administrator. I want to know who these, what these positions do. I want to know what they're tasked with, what their day looks like. Are they supervisor? Sounds very supervisorial. Is he going to be down here on a weekly basis? What's he going to be doing? I want to know what the petroleum administrator, I want to know who hired them, or if they're appointed. I want to know, I want to know more. Notification requirements, there doesn't seem to be notification requirements. I wonder why, I want to know, can we get those? I would like to see Dogger require those, and not only that they get notified when there's drilling, but that we get notified, so we can, if we have, we have the ability then to decide when we need to do some monitoring, we need to know when we need to be on alert, or if our fire department needs to be ready for something because there's activity. I need to know more. Back in 1976, the Attorney General had an opinion which didn't address fracking in itself, but the opinion seemed to suggest that more stringent supplemental regulation by cities or counties is valid for the purpose of conservation and the protection of resources. So I'm comfortable that with more information, I will at least have a better understanding, and not just understanding, but I want to be able to confidently look at the public and say... and say, look, you may not agree with me, but I'm confident that the regulations or the measures we are about to take will protect us. Can I protect, can I protect you against an earthquake? No, obviously not. But can I protect you as best that I know how with regard to what the city is allowed to do? I guarantee you, I will go to the extreme to do that. I just, as I said, I need more information, and it's going to have to start at the state level. I need to know how fracking impact would impact this city. And at this point, at this juncture, we have no way of knowing, and it's very difficult to create regulations or very difficult to create an ordinance or add to an ordinance when the knowledge is not there yet. So it needs to start at the state level. Thank you.
Paul, were you waving at me for a particular reason?
I was just volunteering a commission.
Oh.
I want to put the fracking somewhat in a proper context, and that is talk about oil drilling. I mean, oil drilling is the most environmentally hazardous operation in Los Angeles, Culver City, whether we're doing fracking or not doing fracking. We've got spills, we have dependence on fossil fuels, greenhouse gases from the burning of those fossil fuels, the release of methane gas, contamination of our groundwater, the odor problem, subsidence problems, risks from earthquakes, whether we're fracking or not, and what that impact will be. Worker safety, that's one of the, one of the most hazardous jobs that people have in the oil industry. And also, as mentioned earlier, the impact on your property values if something does happen. So, I mean, we're facing this issue about fracking, but realize, we have a very dangerous operation going on there all the time. And so what's important for us to do, and we're in the process of doing this, is developing our oil drilling ordinance. And so it's very important that we get it right there, because that's really going to be important. Now, I'd like to see fracking be a part of our oil drilling ordinance, as long as it doesn't overly prolong us getting the oil drilling ordinance out. And I understand there may be some issues with, where we have to do some CEQA things in order, which could delay things. Fine, that's fine, we can deal with the fracking as a side, but I think it's very important that we get it right with our oil drilling ordinance and that we make sure that we're really protecting publics. But I also want to go back to the point, too. We have a responsibility, if we're going to be out front on this particular issue, to gather the information and then to go out and become advocates for this, to lobby our public officials, to lobby Dogger and whatever, to make sure that we're not the only ones just standing out there, for we've got other friends along with us that support us in these particular efforts. So my point is just reiterating what everybody else has said. Let's get the information. Let's make sure we've got a good oil drilling ordinance, because that's the day in and day out, is what's really going to have an impact on us. Fracking is important, but again, remember that the risks that are associated just with the operations that are going on on a daily basis there. Thank you.
And I think the point that Jim makes is really a key element to the whole discussion, and that is the regional nature, the nature of the problem. We have a very small piece of the Inwood Oil Field that we have control over. The county controls the rest. We can ban all the fracking we want in our 100 acres, but we need the county to take an equal action in their portion of the oil fields, or whatever we do is almost meaningless. We need, I stand with my colleagues in the necessity to obtain additional information, specifically information from PXP. We need to know what they've done in the past, what the gravel pat fracking that supposedly they've done for decades, what else have they been doing? Where are they drilling now? Where do they propose to drill? What techniques are they using now? What techniques do they propose to drill? PXP recently, as late as last Friday, released a statement that indicated that they had no intentions on doing high-volume horizontal hydraulic fracturing in Culver City. Well, tell us more. I mean, if that's the case, then perhaps there are no issues with regard to prohibiting fracking, because they don't intend to do it. But I'm frightened, I'm worried, and this gets to the question of information and vetting of information. I'm not even sure I understand what fracking means. So we definitely need that information.